I'd just like to say that on behalf of all the secretaries and the O C Union that we are very thankful that we're all back to work. Full time in our jobs and. Back in the buildings, that's pretty exciting. So I just want to say thank. Recognizing us.
We're happy to see you all back for sure.
On behalf of the Evergreen Large Group. Employees, I just want to thank Superintendent Melino. Bradford, all the other esteemed members of the Board of Directors. Governor Inslee for the recognition. Classified workers have. And taken all the curves on our way. And we've always kept the focus on the nurturing, the care and safeguarding and instruction of our students. To help the community and. When I came to the district about four years ago, wasn't sure about working in the district. I actually got folks from Vancouver School District and came to really love working in this district. Wasn't sure about working with high schoolers, came to love working with high schoolers. The opportunities and the relationships that I've been able to build here. This makes me really happy that I'm with the school district and with the classified workers and with the school. So, thank you.
I wondered if Office Clerk Michael, right? What is it that? What do you do?
I am part of the maintenance team. I'm actually the district locksmith. Locksmith of all. All the doors and all the schools. Yeah.
Wonderful. And the school. Rochelle, yeah, thank you. They're written down. I just have to. It's been a long day. Thank you. Thank you for coming and talking with us about this. And Jose, you're leading P S E Large at the moment.
The thing I wanted to say about it after. Where you are and everything's. Just recognize how difficult even compared to a normal difficult year this last year has been. Just acknowledge the amount of work and the amount of change that. You all have had to face. And appreciate it. Really appreciate the efforts that creativity that's come from every different department in the district and every. Every different role trying to reach students and everything. I like to say that when children come to school. First person they see is not a teacher, they see the building secretary, they see the bus driver. Stadium or somebody working in the cafeteria and they did breakfast. And the way that. You treat kids educates them. That to me makes everybody who's working in the schools uneducated. Thank you for taking care of our kids.
I would just like to say thank you very much for all you guys have done over this past year. You guys should all have capes because you were the real superheroes, especially during the initial part of all of it. And so on behalf of the board, I know I can safely say that we are all still very grateful for everything that you guys have done. Thank you. For continuing to come out of your house during quarantine and help make sure our kids were getting what they needed. During that time. So I just appreciate you very much.
I just wanted to say thank you, especially for your patience over the course of last year. And I'm glad that you chose Evergreen. I'm glad that you're part of our team.
Everyone.
Have a round of applause. So much. Now I see here.
We also have Griffin.
I know, that's what I was.
Yeah, so we have an employee that has been nominated for the classified employee of the year award. And so Griffin Payton, Principal at Union High School. It's not you, but maybe you can come forward and introduce the individual and share some information. I'm sure it's just a matter of time for you as well.
Ellen Townsend, could you please come up? I would like to introduce Ellen Townsend to everybody. Ellen Townsend is. And this is my second year, kind of my first year and a half, which has been really. But one of the first things that I tried to do when I got there was just meet with. Her, Ellen, actually having to coordinate it. She sought me out. And she's just extremely dedicated to kids. She's. First six months, I'll never forget for a number of reasons, not the least of which is though the school maybe was. At her workstation setup, relentless. All any way that she possibly could. But enough to work with. Not going to get away with anything, but you're absolutely best. Dominated for this award, unsurprised. Humble, but I wouldn't sit here and take it. Part of the Evergreen School District. A few words.
Come on up.
Yeah, you get to be the public speaker.
Thank, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Payton. I appreciate that. And thank everybody here. It's interesting because today I met with the student and we were going through the genetics mouse gizmo, right? Part one. And so I was asking about his world history. Class and how it's doing. And he was extolling praises of his world history teacher and how great he was. And I said, well, tell him, why don't you email him and tell him that? No, no, I don't want to do that. Said, well, can I do that for you? Can I email this teacher and tell him how much you appreciate him? And he's like, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. There was a pause and then he says, well, can I compliment you? Like, mm. No, that's fine. That's fine. And so he gave me a couple compliments, but I think the one that meant the most was when he said. I can tell that you love your job. I can tell that you love working with us and helping us with the assignments and getting the stuff done. He says, I can tell that you like what you do. I said, you're exactly right. You're exactly right. I love my job. I love what I do. And we just left it at that. And so. There's nothing more to it. It's the bottom line. I want these kids to succeed and I'm going to do what I can. So that's why I thank you.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
Next. Oh.
Can I just say that I loved your story? Thank you for sharing that with us. I don't think that there's any better recognition than when it comes from the people that you are helping and working with. You know, we can, we can tell you thank you all day long, but it means so much more when it's coming from your students. So thank you so much.
That we, we exist as a school district to support kids. And so when you have one of our students actually share that with you, you couldn't get a better. Couldn't get better feedback. That's awesome. So I guess my question is then, when is the, is it through the P S E then? Is that, is that, or is it through O S P I or wins? O S P I? So when do you find out you've won? Okay. Can you have a testimony from that student? Does it take video? I mean, that's, that's such a great, that's a great story. I appreciate sharing that.
Now, the good news just keeps on rolling to not, now we're doing our department spotlight.
And so I, you know, we've been doing a few of these and I thought it would be a good time to recognize the collaboration that has kind of evolved and developed. Between our Nutrition Services Department and our Transportation Department. So I'm going to name, have some people come up and then we'll talk a little bit about. So. Yvonne Gaylord from Transportation, come on up. You have to come up too. And Doreen Lane and Lyndle Grant, come on up. And then Hussein, I'm not going to try to say your last name, Hussein, come on up. You've been here a number of years, but I still can't pronounce your last name. Dean Tran. From Chartwells and then Jen Missfeld. And I don't know if, is Michelle here? Okay, she didn't come. So Jen Missfeld from Nutrition Services. So. These folks represent the, the team that has kind of worked to feed and transport meals to our students for the last year. I think about March 13th, 2020 was the date that Governor Inslee. Closed schools and we went into a completely different way of doing things. And. I think it was what, within two weeks that we had created a system of feeding kids, delivering meals to them using the bus routes that's evolved. Over the course of the last year. You know, I could speak individually for transportation, the things that they've had to deal with in terms of the schedule changes that have occurred. The way that you're transporting supplies to kids on Wednesdays, the way we did that this year, the way that we delivered meals to. Kids at Marion this year because Marion was now at Image at a completely different school. So we needed to go in and deliver the meals to those kids. Then to the partnership that was created where we delivered meals to all the families within the Covington boundaries, which was something that's not been done. So. Everything that's been asked has been amazing. And then you've got the Chartwells folks. That have had how many different iterations of all of these things? And the work that actually has occurred on a day to day basis of creating the meals, delivering the meal, you know, making the meals, getting them ready for delivery. And then. Jan and our Nutrition Services Department, the whole department, you think about all the different waivers that we've faced this year, we're now delivering seven meals to families. We're delivering meals to kids in school. We're delivering meals to kids. On site. We've, 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 I mean, just all of the work that has gone into it. It's just been amazing. And when I look at our county anyway, I know that our kids are being, are receiving more meals, I think, than pretty much any. District in the area. And I'm not really about comparing, but when you look at the number of meals served over the first five months of the school year. I think we've done maybe two times as, as many as a large, a large district next door to us. And that's just from the attitude of anything that we're asked to do. We're going to do it. And I know that I'm a pain in that in terms of saying, okay, well, we, if we can do it, we need to do it. So you guys got to figure it out. And you've all done that from day one. So. I thought it would be good today to recognize these three departments for all the work that's occurred over the last year to feed the community and then deliver those meals to the community. And I know that. The board may have some questions and I'll just leave it at that. And I guess the other thing I would say before we move on. Hussein has recently taken a new job with Chartwells and Joe is back here. Some Joe Arpaio is back here. And Tracy is in the back of the room from Chartwells as well. Want to recognize her. So he, this, you know, he's coming to the end of his time in Evergreen and he will continue to support districts in the area. Dean is going to step into his role in the district. I would say the partnership between Jen and Hussein has been pretty unique in terms of the way that they've worked together to, to create the types of programs and things that we've done. So I, I really think it's important for us to all. Recognize Hussein for the work that he's done in the district. And I personally want to say thank you for everything you've done. And, and I know Dean's going to do a great job. You, you kind of showed up being with the tie tonight, though. I don't know that, maybe not much of a team member there. But just very thankful for what you've done. There, he's going to take it off now. There you go. There's the teammate, but just thankful for all that you've done and really that all that everyone has done to support our students and our families in the, in the Evergreen School District.
Well, I want to agree with Mike on the role that you all played. Get us through this really challenging time and to know that our children were well taken care of and that, because we know when kids are not in school, for many of them, they're also not eating. And so having that food security for our kids was really important. And I'm so happy with how you all handled it and came up with such. Brilliant, different ways to deal with it. And so I appreciate that. Hussein? Oh, you're my buddy. But no, I appreciate how much joy you bring to what you do and, and the wonderful programs that you brought to our district. And, you know, nobody does special lunches like you do. And it's so just, I really appreciate, and we hope you're not a stranger. Stay, come and visit us because we really will miss you. Don't worry. We know you'll be good because you've been trained by the best.
Okay, so I think it was a really great idea and. The whole thing that you guys did last March, just the idea of using our school buses to transport food to families and to children who needed it. I mean, that kept something going for these children that, you know, as Victoria mentioned, they wouldn't have otherwise had. And I just am really impressed by the whole team, but in all the work that you guys did to put into making that happen. And I know it was like a really, it was a lot of work and it was a lot of quick work. And fast thinking and fast action. And that's just really impressive to me. And so kudos to all of you and the whole team. And Hussein and I saw on Facebook that you were leaving us and my heart dropped because I just have to say that as a brand new board member, a couple of years ago, you were always like the friendliest face. When I came into these meetings and. Just how welcoming and how happy you were to see me, like always made me feel more comfortable coming in here. So I just want to say thank you for that and for your support. For not just me and our board, but our whole school system. We all miss you, but good luck in the future endeavors.
I think my Cape comments, I mean, not think, I know actually my Cape comment applies to all of you as well. Putting it together and sending out the troops. All of the kids in our district. Thank you guys so very much for all of your hard work.
So. Part of what I've been doing for the board and for school directors is. Serving on the Legislative Committee for the State School Directors Association. Of course, when the governor closed schools and made his announcements, that association began holding weekly meetings and we began talking about. That first worry. And the first worry really was, oh, the grief of schools are closed. How are they going to get their lunch? How are they going to get their food? Knowing as Vic said, that it's vital service and it goes right through our organizations. And. The creativity and the scope of what. Your departments did and your people did to bring food and school supplies to the kids right away. Outpaced everybody else. I think. I think there was one other district doing it, taking food to the kids on the buses. At. That might have beat you by a day, getting it started and spun up. And. The work with the waivers, knowing how uncertain they always were, would get close to the, these are, these are the USDA waivers that keep the summer programs going, that make it so that everybody has free lunch. Let's call it, call it what it is and just get food to kids. They expire. And then one of them wouldn't be renewed until the very, very, very last second. And I'm pretty sure that there was a lot of advocacy coming from your offices. Towards the Department of Education, just like there was everywhere else. I want to thank you for that. Because sometimes it would seem like they weren't listening or something and then come together at the last minute to do it. You all came together with a plan so quickly and so effectively. And there's this picture on Facebook, if you go back. Months of this toddler just squealing with joy at getting lunch from the school bus, just like her older sisters. I'm gonna. I know that parent and she was so happy that day. She texted that picture to me. And I'll never forget that. You brought open joy in a time when everyone was. never forget that. You brought open joy in a time when everyone was really had cause to panic more than hope. Uh, and you brought it to children. The logistics couldn't have been easy in normal times and look at it now and just thank you. Thank you again. Thanks so much.
And really, I think we always like to think that we're trendsetters here at Evergreen. And I remember that weekend really well, and Mike had been in communication with us talking about, you know, everything was closing down, but we were, our, our goal was to make sure that kids were gonna get fed come Monday, um, just like they would have. And I think that, you know, we kind of started it, made our plan and y'all worked really well together. And then all the other districts across the state, they kind of followed right behind us and making sure that, you know, not only Evergreen kids were fed, but all the kids across the state of Washington, they have a plan put in place. But I really think it was by the example of this group. So thank you.
I, I don't really have anything else, but my guess is that Hussein may want to say something.
Yeah, we know. He is a public speaker.
And, and certainly anybody else that's up there is more than willing, uh, welcome to speak after Hussein if you're interested. And I also know that there's people that maybe don't want to speak.
So, you know, a lot of times I attend these board meetings and say, please hurry up. I want to go to my family or be with my family. But, um, but I, I, today I'm gonna take my time, if it's okay. Um, first, um, I wanted to recognize it, very important people that have helped us all do well. And the first one is Mike. Um, you know, Mike is our leader. I remember Saturday morning, maybe around 10 o'clock, I received a call from Superintendent Malino, sorry, I said Mike. Uh, Superintendent Malino said, you know, he said, we can't do this 200 or like we are, we're planning to do like 4,000, 2,000 students. So he gave us our number. He gave us our direction and he gave us our coaching. He was our coach. He was our cheerleader. And he made us believe that we can make this happen. Um, and I, a- and it was, it was amazing what he did for us. I also want to recognize a couple of people in the room that participated. I remember Brian, Jan, myself, Yvonne, we were sitting in the room trying to figure this out the day before on Friday. And, um, and I remember that I could literally call Brian for anything and he will say done. I was like, I need this, um, you know, pallet jack. He got it done. I, I needed this. He did all these things. We reached out to Sue. It's like we, we needed to get some ice so we can get the milk and ice to deliver. And she connected with Kevin and Marty. And I still have, uh, Kevin's number is Ice Kevin, because that's the guy who I named it Ice. It was Ice Kevin. It's still on my phone. I'll keep it. Um, so there's so many people that really helped. Um, Tracy, um, was in the Foxhole with me and Dean and, um, and Jen and Yvonne and Lynn, um, and, uh, everybody else. Um, and, and if you can, please come close to us too, because I think you really did a lot. Um, so she, she was right there with us on the Friday, on the Saturday or the Sunday. Um, you know, Yvonne's commitment and calmness really helped us all do well. I remember that day and I think everybody was pumped up. And you can just look at Yvonne, it's like, you know, it's all cool. I got this, you know? So, um, I, I just want to say that, uh, it, it really took all of us to, to make this happen. And a lot of people in the district that maybe are not in the room today, but they all did. Um, so that's the first part. Um, the second part is, I, I have to recognize my partner in crime, Jen Messfield. Um, there's so many times that we sat together, um, and planned some strategies for how we're gonna move the needle forward, not just with the food, with the meals and the transportation, but anything. We had this feeling that we wanted the cafeteria to be a destination for the students, not just hot food, cold, hot, food, hot, cold, food, cold. It was our intention for them to have the full experience. Um, and I don't think, I mean, you know, Jen says this, um, everything is figuratable. I know, not pronouncing correctly, figuratable. But, but we really did, we, we literally did not have, never put our minds into something. We did not accomplish it. And the only reason was, well, we were really connected into figuring this out together. Um, she is really an amazing leader. Um, she, she's the one that focuses on the details, make sure all the, all the little pieces are together, you know? I'm all excited trying to get things, you know? It's all about feeling for me and for her. It's all about the details. And I think because the feelings were that way and the details were taken care of, I think, I really think that our customers got really, a really good experience. Um, I feel that every student in this district is my and Jen's guest when we go through the cafeteria. And I know that, um, I could ask Dean to do anything in the world and he'll get it done. Same thing with Tracy. Um, and I feel sometimes we really literally ask the impossible of these guys, but they, their passion, their commitment to the students make it happen. I don't know where I'm going with this conversation, but I want to let you guys know one thing, that I was honored to serve every student here at Evergreen. I was humbly honored to serve each and every one of you. Every time we had a board meeting, I tell my staff, I said, these are our personal guests. I want the forks in the right spots. I want the right, the, um, now we know about the Italian dressing, but I want to have the, um, Thousand Island dressing available, um, the glint-free items. And we know how hard you as board members work and we know how much they pay you for the job that you're doing. So the least we can do is at least have you enjoy this experience being here. Um, and I know sometimes it's very painful with all the stuff that you have to do. So it was really absolutely our honor to serve you. This place will have, will have a spot in my heart for the rest of my life. And you are my clients for the rest of my life. I want to thank you. I want to thank everybody here also.
I, I think Hussein, you, you, you're more than welcome, but Hussein, you did a great job.
I don't particularly like to talk either. It's a transportation thing. I think in order to get into transportation, you have to be an introvert and not want to talk. And especially if you want to be a director and assistant director, you have to really be scared of it because that's who all ends up there for some reason. Uh, we take classes on it and whatnot and, uh, uh, we do it out of fear. But, you know, I would say on behalf of transportation, uh, transportation's always up for a good challenge. And this year we were tested. Uh, we were up for many challenges. Um, I would say that we really appreciate the support that we've received in transportation, uh, from the Evergreen School District, not just this year, but every year. You know, for me personally, that's been my experience here, uh, for five years that I've been here at Evergreen. Um, I've been places where there isn't support like that. So that's very much appreciated. Uh, so thank all you, you know, for that. Um, uh, we had some ups and downs this year in transportation, but, uh, we pulled through. We really enjoyed the work. The drivers stepped up. Um, this district and I think education professionals as a whole, you know, we're all in this together. We say that a lot. Um, but we wouldn't be doing the work that we do, any of us here, if it weren't for, you know, a drive from within, from somewhere else, you know? So I'm just thankful for the people that we get to work with, thankful that we all still have jobs this year. You know, that's a good thing. Thankful everybody's back to work. Looking forward to seeing more and more kids on buses and just thank you.
That's worth repeating. The drivers stepped up. Stand in all of that. Great to watch.
And, uh, I think it goes with the theme from Ellen ET, you know, doing things for kids, right? I mean, here's just another whole group of, of classified employees. And I'm not, the teachers do the same thing, but here for our kids, right? We're gonna figure out a way to serve them, help them however they need to when they're at school. We're gonna make sure we're bringing meals to them. We're gonna make sure that we're there for them when they need to get to school. So it's, it's, it's great. Uh, I appreciate all of you and you did an amazing job and nice words, Hussein. Appreciate it. Joe, you stole him. What the heck? Why are you even here? I'm just kidding. I, I love you, Joe. I'm just kidding. Thank you all very much. I forgot, I forgot this is being broadcast out. I apologize. This is just for us here.
Hey. Now we move to the board's consent agenda. I will.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have approved the consent agenda. Okay. Next up, we have the superintendent's consent agenda. Do I hear a motion for approval of that?
I move to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, do you have approval of the superintendent's consent agenda? Okay. Next up, the super.
I think that's right.
Superintendent.
Okay.
The board?
Thank you. I'm gonna update on a few things. Uh, the county, as it has done for many weeks, updated their number per hundred thousand. Uh, it dropped a little bit more to a hundred and three, uh, this, to today. And I think the cases that actually, uh, were counted today was like 18 cases. So that's, I think, the lowest number of daily cases that have been measured since last September. Um, so again, uh, we see, uh, the number staying at a low rate. That's a good thing. As of last Thursday, March fourth, all of our schools were back hybrid K-12. Uh, that's fantastic. I had the opportunity, I've shared many times that I've been getting out and, and meeting with associate principals today. I just went up to Cascade. Allison took me around and was able to kind of show me some of the classrooms, what's going on, the, the teachers teaching the kids in the classroom as well as simultaneously at the same time. We went into the band room, got to see the masks, custom masks with the opening so that they can play with the mask. And then on the end of the instrument, there's a, uh, like a black thing that they put on the end so that nothing comes out, or not much anyway, apparently comes out. So a little listen to that. That's just kind of seen the way that they're working around and working through. It was quiet. It was really quiet at Cascade. Um, I think it's, it's gonna take a little while for the kids to get comfortable, um, being back, but honestly, they're so excited to be back. It's, but it's just a different, it's just a little bit of a different, uh, normal right now. We walked through the cafeteria. I know Jenny shared some of the experiences of folks that she's had and Mar- uh, Marty as well. Um, the, the cafeteries are, you know, chairs kind of set up socially distanced, facing forward. The different schools are trying to do different things like showing movies on the screen during lunch or playing games, whatever it is. Uh, but, uh, at Evergreen, they talked about how kids are talking to each other that maybe wouldn't have been talking to each other, you know, because you're not sitting, they're kind of assigned seats to where you're at based upon your classes. You're not, you're not with just your friends. So, you know, we're, we're facilitating some, uh, you know, connections between kids that might not otherwise have occurred. Uh, but just really, it was great to get into the schools and see that. Um, I think, uh, I, I basically every day or every other day, I'm getting an opportunity to get out. It's, it's been a, a good experience to meet with the associate principals for me, uh, and get to know people differently than I've known them in the past as well. Vaccination update. I've shared with you all that the county for quite some time has been working together on, um, the districts working together with Kaiser, Peace Health, Legacy. Um, we put out a, uh, uh, an email that had kind of a Google form. Janay and her staff then took that in about a day, maybe half a day, turned that into prioritizations of who were the, the folks over 65, who were the folks that were in more high-risk types of positions. Um, turned that around, provided that to Kaiser over the weekend. They started reaching out to people. But what we're finding is while there are something like 12,000 school employees in, in the county, first of all, not everybody is necessarily agreeing that they want to have the vaccination. From that, once Governor Inslee made the announcement, we kind of had a whole plan in place where we thought we could get through in about a week at, at Heritage, Hudson's Bay, a few other sites in the county. But President Biden made it of, uh, school employees prioritize, Governor Inslee prioritize. And then everybody became independent contractors at that point in time. I really feel like folks have just had access through the fairgrounds, through the Tower Mall or Town Plaza, through Safeway, Walmart, C-Mar. And, and folks have really done well on their own to, uh, make these appointments. And so at the end of the day, I think that they, uh, where Kaiser and, and our, our providers had somewhere around 2,500 to 3,000, um, vaccinations available for distribution. I think in the end, maybe only a thousand people responded to that, to the point that now, I think tomorrow, we'll send out an email with just a phone number to our employees saying, if you, if you want a vaccination and you haven't already been contacted, you can just call this number and make that happen. So, um, the vaccinations are an important part of the return to school because again, the thing at this point, you know, we, we're in hybrid, but for us to be able to get to a point where we're back five days a week, this six-foot rule is something that's gonna have to be addressed. Uh, i- i- and that's through vaccinations. It's through the science. It's through what we're seeing that occur. Uh, thanks to Jay and Holly who have done an unbelievable job of, from the beginning, the contact tracing that's gone on, the communication with our buildings. I mean, it really has been a, a, an amazing effort. And I, and I don't say this just because I work here, but honestly, as you said, Julie and Rob, where others in the state were kind of looking at us from the perspective of the, the way we fed folks. I know that, that, the, around the county, you've got health folks reaching out to Jay, reaching out to Holly. Um, the school, a lot of the schedules that are, are occurring, um, the teaching and learning folks were some of the earliest individuals putting that information out. The COVID captain work, Scott Eppinger, Shane Gardner, every week they have meetings with principals and associate principals talking about the safety guidelines and the protocols. And it's, it's been a tremendous effort. So I'm very appreciative of all of that. Um, HB 1368 was passed earlier this year, which required a progress report. Uh, I think I sent a copy of that to everybody. Uh, we sent that in here, uh, got approval for that, uh, from the state, uh, received emails back that they had approved our plan, which what that means is then we have the ability to access the SRR2 funds that have been provided, uh, to the district. Uh, the initial allocation, because they've held back about 10% was a little over 16 million. That will help us with our shortfall this year. Uh, that will help us, that'll help make us whole in terms of our shortfall this year. Uh, so appreciate Julie and the teaching and learning team put that plan together, worked with folks to get that, uh, progress report sent in. Very appreciative of our buildings to get to the point where as of March fourth, we had everybody back. That's been a quite amazing effort as well. A couple of other things real quick. Um, you know, we've been able to take advantage in some respects, uh, and we've been able to accelerate the courageous conversations training that's occurred with our bus drivers, um, coming back now. We're gonna use Wednesdays to do courageous conversation trainings for all of our bus drivers and we'll expand that to other classified staff so that it's not being done on in-service days in August. It'll be on days that, that, uh, are already workdays for our folks. So, uh, Yvonne and Clarissa worked out the schedule on that. I think Janay reached out to Yvonne to help facilitate that so that we now have that set up, uh, so that we'll get that taken care of this spring and it, it do as much of the courageous conversation training with our classified staff as we can now. We've gotten all our buildings. We've gotten all our buildings done. We've been able to take that to the next, to the next steps. So that, that's a, that's a great, a positive that's come is the time that we had and that we've been able to take advantage of that. I mentioned, I think, last week, our graduation dates are still June tenth through the twelfth, and Shane, Brian, the buildings are all working on options that we might have. Definitely, it's gonna look different. I mean, it's not gonna be a drive-through as it was last summer. We've still got our date set. There'll be some graduation at McKenzie. We're just hoping beyond all hope that there's some relaxation of the limits in terms of how many people can be there. And then we'll be able to react to that as soon as we hear on that. And of course, we'll talk more with all of you as we get closer on what our options might be. We had a strategic plan workshop last Thursday. That was great. So we'll, we'll take that. You may have your own comments on that, but that was good to help us kind of provide some direction. And then I want to just talk about a couple partnerships. I think we'd also already mentioned the EP, the Gear Up bill, I think maybe in one of our meetings, shared with that with the board. It's a, a option. There are three objectives with Gear Up, increasing academic performance and preparation for post-secondary education, increase high school graduation and post-secondary participation rates, and increasing students and their families' knowledge of post-secondary options. And we already had that set up with three of our middle schools in grade seven and eight. Cascade, Covington, and Y East. We believe that we have a real good opportunity to explain, expand that into Frontier as well. It's based upon the free and reduced percentage in a building. And Frontier is right on the cusp of that. So we think we're gonna be able to do that with Frontier as well. And a second round of that was we now have the ability to get it into sixth grade as well. So basically, all, we likely will have four of our middle schools in this partnership with Gear Up. It's a good thing for our kids. And then you remember years ago, we had a partnership with N Connect and Scott Keeney. And, and it was kind of a partnership between the, the staff, working with our teaching staff and kind of helping. And then I think that over time, that kind of ebbed and flowed, and Scott reached back out again this fall and has been working with Brian on re-establishing that. And so we've had some meetings to re-establish, re-establish that and real happy about that ability for us to kind of move that partnership forward with N Connect as well.
Mike?
Yes.
Was that the, I think it's the parent of community meter, student meter program?
It was, it was, it was identified staff at N Connect that would work with the, with the teachers and kind of work with them. And it was kind of an AP-focused STEM that type. But they're actually starting to now get into the point. I'll read some of the teacher volunteer. In the past, it's worked best where the teacher wants and appreciates the input on subject matter. The example would be a physicist working with an AP physics teacher and student, and students, the subject area is gonna be sciences, math. They're also gonna work with kids on college essays and applications to help prepare them for those types of things. Bill's gonna be the, kind of the, Justin Birmingham's working with them, Bill's working them, working with the principals. So we're just kind of in the starting of this, but it's just kind of re-establishing. John, I think originally, Dieter originally kind of worked with Scott on this, and I think Scott had his own kids that kind of went through the system. And so there were some years where it kind of slowed down a bit, but now he's refocused and we're all refocused on that partnership as well. So that's a, a good thing. Real good thing. So anyway, that's all I have to say here right now.
Um, next up, we have a public hearing regarding bond projects.
Yeah, we do. We certainly do. All of a sudden.
We have all the fun news.
We do. Yeah. So, so we have talked at a couple workshops about a, a really great thing. And that is that, you know, in, in two thousand and eighteen, we passed the bond. And when we ran the bond, there was a resolution that the board authorized to allow us to put the bond on the ballot, have voters vote for it, and it identified a, a number of things in that resolution. We've done this once before, maybe more than once, but the time I've been here, we've done this once before where we had proceeds from a bond. There were some proceeds left over at the end of a bond project that allowed us to end up building Gila High School. Qualified, we took some of those bond proceeds and got state matched to do that. But when, when you have money left over from a bond, because certain projects weren't in the original resolution, there needs to be another resolution identifying those projects and then a public hearing allowing folks to share any kind of feedback on that. So what we're doing tonight is having some public feedback, if there is any. And then also, two weeks from now, we'll actually, the resolution would be approved. So you've seen, I think, a copy of the resolution was in the documentation that Lori showed, shared. What we've identified are some projects that we would consider moving forward dependent upon the exact amount of money that is left over. But I'd say the, of the projects, the, the, I mean, they're all significant projects, obviously, but one of them you'll see in the resolution is the construction of Mill Plain Elementary School. So Mill Plain was not in the original package, a package of projects. But we are, the actual wording is to the extent that funds are available after completion of the projects listed above, which are all the projects that we already have done or are in the process of doing. The improvements shall also include the following: replace Mill Plain Elementary School, modernize spaces used for college career and technical education programs at Evergreen High School. That's actually at Legacy. So it's on the Evergreen campus. It's the adding some CTE programs that would serve both Cascade and Evergreen High School. Make capital improvements to enhance music programs at Evergreen and Union High Schools. That's the, the orchestra rooms that we've talked about. We have an orchestra room being constructed in Mountain View. It's an option in the Heritage project that we will move forward with. So doing the same at Evergreen and Union. And then replace or modernize the district's transportation facility. So these are the main projects that we have listed. And then if funds are available, these are the ones that we would consider in the resolution that we would authorize. And this is all, as we've talked at in previous workshops, the benefit, the opportunity here is because of the amazing work that's gone in across the district and then the amazing timing that we had in terms of the whole project. I, I think that one of the things that the board has always believed in is transparency and community involvement, right? So we had a committee before we ever thought about running the bond that looked at how do we finance it? And a lot of the recommendations were we need to keep the tax rate flat if at all possible, but look at running a bond as large as you possibly could. When things were going well, we certainly had the projects for that. We ended up doing that. No tax increase bond because we had so many bonds falling off that were old, paid off. And then hopefully, at, at the time that we did it, we had significant cost escalation that was happening in the county and really in the state. So the hope was you run a bond and then you just time it right where everything kind of starts to stabilize. And that's exactly kind of what's happened. And I've shared we've bid or built six elementary schools. And the first one that we priced was the highest of the six. The price has gone down every one of those. So where you have stories often of governmental cost overruns and delays, what we've actually seen in this project are cost underruns and acceleration of projects, which has just meant extra work on Sue's staff, on the RNC staff, on principals that are doing their jobs on a daily basis. At the same time, they're trying to provide information on how to replace their school, whether that's at any of our elementaries or, or middle schools or high schools. So to me, this resolution, the fact that we can talk about this and have an opportunity to provide even more for our community is a significant thing. And I just want to say thanks to Sue and all of those that have been part of this. And that's, that's kind of the background in this. Now, the resolution will be approved tonight. It would be approved in two weeks. But there you go.
Um, are there any fellow out there who'd like to comment on this bond? Yes. Name again for the, for the record.
I'm Michael McCall. I'm with the maintenance department. If the funds are available, I strongly urge the replacement of Mill Plain due to its age and pretty much in disrepair. Do our best to keep it going. And that's really what we've been doing is keeping it going. The back system is controls are hard to get from. Doors are falling apart. We have on part of the bond side, I actually saved this school for last hoping to actually get put in there. So we aren't re-keen it until board decides whether or not to place it or not. So there is an additional cost savings in there, but I would strongly urge the replacement of Mill Plain.
For anyone else in the audience? Aye, come on up.
So I'm Marty Edelstein, just a member of the community. My question is if there are any funds that are unused from the bond, what happens to them?
Any funds in, so the resolution authorizes the things you should spend the money on. If at the end, there literally was no, nothing else to spend that was authorized by law, then those funds potentially could, well, they would be used to pay down the bonds. So if we issued six hundred million in bonds and we had twenty million left over and there were no other projects to do, you would theoretically use that to buy down some of the bonds that had been issued to originate the project.
Yeah, there's always projects.
You're not supposed to use that against me, Marty. It is a good thing.
Have anyone on the, okay. Right then. Alright, so I
I don't have to do anything. I think we'll just come back in two weeks.
We'll vote on it at the next board meeting.
Me asking about if anybody was answering.
I forgot to ask the board if they had anything to say. So, board? Comments, questions?
I have a question. Um, the way that it's listed in the resolution, is the order of the additional items commit us to exactly that order in the projects?
It doesn't. No. And, and ultimately, none of the projects will move forward without more action from the board. I mean, this resolution authorizes these projects, but it doesn't mean that they would necessarily happen until we started moving resolutions forward on all of the other work and to she's on the heels, all that. But we'd have more conversations about, okay, this is the exact cost. And, and part of it also is ensuring we've got the money to do all of them. At the end, I think the most pressing is what Michael was talking about. If, if we're able to move forward on Mill Plain, we would have kids in a new Mill Plain by the fall of twenty-three, I believe. So next year, they would stay at their school. And then the following year, they would go to Image more likely than not. And then the following year, they would be in a brand-new, in a brand-new Mill Plain. And we would build on the Mill Plain property. We'll take, we'll take that, you know, we're not gonna be building while the kids are at the school. We'll take them off and that'll allow us more time to make sure that everything's ready for the fall, the fall of twenty-three.
This is kind of remarkable. The last three years, we've done eleven buildings.
Yeah, I mean, how many are going on right now?
A lot.
Eight?
This is touching and improving every building in the district. Eight more.
The bond approval of two thousand and eighteen, I mean, and we've talked about it. The, the last year where we've been out of our facilities, the kids are so happy to be back in the hybrid situation. When we come back in the fall, fully believe that the six-foot rule have been addressed by then. And kids will come back five days a week and we're gonna have amazing facilities. We're gonna have great facilities for our community, for our kids that show up to school every day and and ET, I mean, we're all about the kids, right? I mean, that's what we're here for. And so thankful to the voters to put us in a position to have wonderful facilities and the work that Sue and all these folks have done to be able to capitalize. It's possible we can get kids back more fully.
I was just gonna make a comment. I don't really have any questions, but when we look at the list of all of the work that's been done and then to be in a position where we can get, because the list that we have listed for additional projects is huge. So the fact that we're able to be in that position, you know, there's so often, you know, just you, you, you read about places that are having to make cuts when it comes to some of the things that they, that they budgeted because it just wasn't enough money to complete the projects. And here, we're in this position where not only are we able to complete everything that was on our original list and more to that original list, and then even more on the backend, including the possibility of building another school. That's crazy. So we have the largest bond in the state of Washington, history of state of Washington, and we've done very, very well with it. So lots of credit to the people that did do the work.
Have to maintain that tax rate and not for this many buildings, it would seem like you'd be like jacking it way up there, but by the great planning that Mike and his people have done to things at the right time to pay off those other bonds. He held off for a long time. We made a commitment. And I remember when we said we're not gonna be running any more bonds until we get to this point. And it was scary thinking that because we knew we needed these buildings. But it worked and it came out good. And I think we've been paid back by allowing us to do other things that are needed. But we are trying to be very conservative about people's tax rates. And so hey, good. So we'll bring this forward next, at our next board meeting and if he has any other comments or anything. Next up, we have board comments. Any have? So busy last week with our school improvement plans and our strategic planning. And so we've got a lot that we're gonna be we're all excited that we can get back into schools and see kids in there. You know, we, it's, we haven't been able to go in and so it's gonna be exciting to
Just trying to see if there was anything to report.
Have on Thursday morning, a tour of the the sea and the other schools.
I think it's Thursday afternoon.
The afternoon? I don't know.
What's up?
I've got so much going on.
Rachel? It's, I think it's in the afternoon.
It's at two thirty PM.
Okay. I stand corrected.
Yeah, I extended a, I had a legislative meeting that I talked about two weeks ago with Paul Harris. We brought a student along, talked about that, but I also extended an invitation for him to come see these new facilities. And he accepted and calendared it. So we're just kind of waiting for Tony, his administrative assistant, to for sure confirm.
And it's supposed to be fifty-seven and sunny on Thursday.
That'll be nice.
I know. That's nice.
That's a good thing.
Rob, when, you know what that date's going to be? Could you let me know? Because I would mumble that one. Paul and I go way back.
It's the school tour.
He may come.
He's gonna be back.
Invited him to that.
Additional one. Okay. Good. Perfect.
And he, he goes to, I think he visits Cascade and Evergreen more often than he tells me about. And just comes into the buildings and sees the students. And just comes into the buildings and sees the students and.
That's good.
That's always been a a good relationship uh with Paul. I wanted to make you all aware that the uh. There's a push in the legislature right now to add twenty million dollars in a budget proviso. This money in the budget for outdoor school. This is a pilot program and I was uh in conversations with Ray Yurkowitz of the Mount St. Helens Institute who is trying to build. An outdoor school facility up on the mountain, right? Uh, so if you want to uh participate in the advocacy for that, we remember outdoor school. Uh, he was telling me that Oregon found a way to get it back uh in. Uh, opportunities for fifth and sixth graders in uh. The way that we used to do it in Evergreen because I can remember going to outdoor school, right? And then the program was canceled out of a combination of disinterest or something like that. And I thought that would be worth mentioning uh here. Uh, and I can get you the details about it's not a bill. And so it's just kind of like, please uh support Senator Hunt's um budget proviso proposal for this pilot program. And then years down the road, his dream is to have outdoor school. And find new facility that all of our students could go to who were interested at those grade levels. He calls it an equity issue, so.
It's not because I was on the boardroom that ended. It was not a matter of. Not wanting to do it. It was definitely a budget situation when we were doing budget cuts and other things. And just making sure that the time that was taken out of the classroom is. The way it needed to be, but.
Yeah.
It was a financial thing um did that.
The district had the benefit of the Donaville facility, the.
Well, we use.
Camp Donaville facility for so many years.
But then when we couldn't do that, do the state, you know, overnight. Instead, we started using the um.
Columbia Springs.
Humble, yes. Um, as our kind of a outdoor school experience and make.
They would do, they would go to Columbia Springs and I think there was maybe some at one time there were bus field trips to the beach or up the gorge. So there were kind of a variety of trips that were offered for a period of time. Of course, we haven't had any this year.
Yeah.
Didn't.
They're like those special outdoor school field trip trip things. So, yeah.
The institute was writing grants and the district was gracious enough to send a letter of support. Because uh even like the academic year before the the pandemic began. There were a a number of students in specific classrooms. I think it's Covington and a couple of other schools on that end of the district who were. Participating in day trips up from that and getting an experience that we had the great recession really took from everybody. So they're restoring the back piecemeal, but there there's some motion there to uh make that a general opportunity. And I encourage everybody to look into that, participate and I'll send you the information if you want. We have the week on the hill. Next week, we're placing the day on the hill. We'll talk about that after. Thanks a little bit, but I did get a student interested. Uh, through the connections there, so we'll be reaching out, seeing if she can provide some testimony. That's what I have.
Look about you that I thought maybe.
Just looking forward to our visit on Thursday and then I actually have a school visit scheduled for next week, so I'm excited to actually get back into a classroom and see what's happening.
Oh, thank you. Uh, mixed up future agenda items. Do we have any agenda items that you'd like to? Have us think about?
Second delay. May I suggest that we uh share reading the land acknowledgement um so that it's not just my voice? Around rather than to other board members. Would that be okay?
You're so good at showing. Um. I'm wondering about maybe getting on the agenda. Um, an update on, you know, we've talked about our kids that have had some loss of. Learning during the COVID and where we are on that and the um what's happening this summer and. So we can, are you guys all?
Absolutely. Yeah, that'd be good. Want that in a workshop?
I think that would be fine.
Only do it two weeks.
Hey. All right, now we have on our agenda citizen comments. This is the time when citizens. Worry about anything that is not already was already on the agenda. Legal in nature or or regarding personnel. When sign up. But you want to and didn't know to sign up. Okay, thank you. Now we will go into recess where we will reconvene for a board workshop. We will have on that agenda the teaching and learning equity update and a legislative update. That is it for for so many. Thank you so much for joining us. Hey. Um, we're going to reconvene for our board workshop. First up is a teaching and learning equity update.
Hi, everyone. Woo. So I'm I'm going to give both the teaching, learning and equity updates. Clarissa, it is her birthday tonight. So she is not with us. And so first her update. It is International Women's Day and Month. The day was on Monday. This is the month. So just similar to last month when we did the Martin Luther King Assembly. They are doing a virtual assembly that's going to be available to all schools and it's going to feature. Panel of young women from the Vancouver area sharing their experiences. So I think this is a great tradition that they're starting to do these virtual. And assemblies that we can share throughout. One of the things her committee has been working on is creating the EPS equity lens. And this is going to be a really important document that becomes something all of us use and it will help us. And to begin with, they're having the communications department work with it to create a graphic or a visual. That can be used for all different groups and parties. The equity lens is a process for analyzing diagnosing how the design and implementation of our internal systems, processes, procedures. Resources, programs and policies impact our marginalized groups. So its purpose is to bre- prevent and or identify and eliminate barriers in order to create more equitable outcomes. We've seen these lenses being used in different districts and it's interesting how the use, you know, you'll see them in the tables and in boardrooms and. Something just to bring your eye to similar to the protocol, the equity protocol that we think about. But that lens in which are we thinking about groups? Are we thinking about people when we're making these decisions? Or we think about all? When we're doing that. So it leads you through a series of questions. As we've seen other districts use these, what they've all said is it's become second nature that you don't even need the paper anymore. So I'm excited to get that lens um going in a form that we can all use it and it's something that becomes part of our second nature. And then her last thing was that the equity audit plans that we have um portions of are well underway. Julie, me, we'll share more about the CNI items. And Janay can share the H R items. The planner links have been added to the documents so that the progress of each item can be reviewed. So under the teaching and learning one. There's a planner link and then it has different tabs for the different equity agenda items. And there's different um due dates and action items based on what those items are. So that is Clarissa's update. Questions about that as best as I can answer them.
Do we have a way to view the drafts? Um, yeah, or is that coming later?
Of the equity lens?
Uh, the equity lens and the uh the plans that you're working on.
Yeah, I believe you guys have access to the draft, the equity planner, right? I will make sure you have access to that.
There's no link in today's meeting, but if you could send us, send us the links, it'd be nice to see.
Yes, we will get those to you. Okay, and then the teaching, learning, equity update. And our core belief is that all the teaching, learning and equity work is interwoven. So when we think about the path of EPS students, the goal of our work is to. Optimize the experience of the students specifically moving forward using the equity lens. To think about student and adult learning, professional development, instructional coaching and all the other areas that fall under teaching and learning. So just thinking about some of the big things that we've been doing this year, starting, I would say, with some of the work last year and then moving forward. And they put uh professional development, what Mike was talking about with courageous conversations. One, we got all our administrators certified and classified staff through just the two day training. But connected to that has been monthly professional development in the buildings. With and through teaching, learning and Clarissa. So. Teachers are using the courageous conversation protocol to engage, sustain and deepen their conversations about inequities. Teachers are also using conversations to identify areas in which inequities exist in their own practice and collaborate with colleagues to set goals and reduce and eliminate them. And these are all the goals of the professional development this year. Uh, teachers will build their awareness of themselves as racial racial and cultural beings through reflection and the composing of their racial autobiography. And then the effectiveness of courageous conversation protocol is that we continue exploring and practicing with it. I think as some of you have come to the adult meetings, it's really important to continue to think about the protocol. And the ease in which we're able to engage in these conversations is the more we use them. So in our buildings, they're doing the same thing. They're thinking about the protocol. There now as students are coming back into the building, you know, they were able to do this somewhat virtually. But having it in building with students, the practice will come more readily. Another big area of our work and that's coming up specifically is master scheduling. Bill Omen, it uh got us a grant to work with this company called Able. And they did some work that I was really impressed with and it was very actionable. So the work that they did was take a deep dive into our student transcripts. What do students take? What classes? What pathways do they take? And how do they get either into the pathway and then what's the end result? And what we found, and I think what is common sense to us, but still something we need to disrupt is once students start a pathway. An AP pathway, a general education pathway, a grade level pathway, they stayed in that pathway. Students hardly ever veered off of these pathways. And so through this Able training. The school teams and it included counselors, the admin, they're creating plans for how do we disrupt those pathways? How do we get kids to think of themselves in a different pathway? How did we get them to think of themselves in the AP pathway? And we're excited about some of those plans. Those plans may include some of the summer work. So Vic, you asked about summer plans. And that is one of them is how can we get kids the eighth to ninth grade years when they have they've chosen some classes? But how can we create a summer institute where it's like an AP jumpstart? We get them some skills, we build them up, we really think about how do you create the mindset that these students can do and take any class they want? That training was one of the ones that our principals and teacher groups were. So excited about because it really included data right now and something they could do right away. And we're looking into partnering them for middle school work as well. There's not as many pathways in middle school, but we do know we've had issues with. Our math pathways in the past and how do we get kids in and out of different pathways? So that's the next step of that work. And some of the other work we've done, which has led to, you heard this in the SIP meetings. But the grading for equity work that we did, the grading guidance that we put out in the in August. Really led to conversations and hard conversations in buildings about grading practices. And pieces that we hadn't necessarily taken on before. So there's been a lot of work with that and then we're continuing to think about what can grading guidance look like moving forward when it's non pandemic times. But that we are beliefs in grading. So that was, I think, an opportunity that we really gained. From the situation that will be continuing to move forward. The work that we're doing with the Gates Grant and Ed Northwest and from the equity audit. And from some of the work we're doing with them, the focus for that work is. What are the specific supports for targeted acceler- acceleration, instruction and non academic supports for our BIPOC and ELL students? And students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. So we are targeting the students that were most impacted and then it's an eighteen month partnership. To figure out what are our systems, what are our structures and how can we improve all of those in the next eighteen months and then continue. So what's exciting, I think, about the Ed Northwest Gates Grant is that it's not just a we're doing something now. While they are working with us for summer school plans and they'll be doing some of the strategic planning, it's really thinking forward. With that work and how are we working on our systems for those populations? And then the last one about summer school, and I can talk about this more at another time, but um our summer school planning, what we have done so far is thinking. We have gotten our principals together, our principals instructional team, we had people from the ELL department, CNI. Specialized federal programs to think about what are the core needs of our students for this summer? What do we need? What programs do we need to think outside of the box? We held secondary meetings, elementary meetings, came up with a lot of good ideas around it's the core that they. They reading, writing and math, and then they need to make it fun. Right? Like our students have had school, which hasn't been all that fun in the last year. It's been online. So we want in person summer school. We'll probably have remote options as well. And then the Gates Grant is coming in with some research about what are highly effective summer programs? So we're working with them to tie the highly effective summer programs with what do our students need? And what do we hear from the buildings? And then we're surveying our students and families to find out what do they need? They have been our partners all through the year and this last year that we think that they have and they're going to have a lot of opinions about what they need. We also know when we send out surveys, we miss populations of students. So the next step is through our counselors, our student engagement teams that we've had going all year, they know the students. So we're going to go directly to those families, calling them, asking them what they need. What do you need to be engaged in summer school this summer? What would it look like for you? And then gather that information to continue and finalize the plan. Okay, that's it for tonight. So that's a summary of a lot of the work that we've been doing, just hitting a couple of different areas. But thinking about all of the work of teaching, learning and equity is entwined together. And sometimes we don't, we don't call it out as clearly as that, but I wanted to make sure that you were able to see it.
Thanks, Julie. And next up, we have a legislative update.
Uh, yeah, I'll start and then Rob can fill in uh wherever he deems appropriate. The. Uh, the the work continues. Uh, we're still what? A little over a month, I think, away from being done. Uh, tomorrow I'm participating in a a call with uh. Those large school districts, the lobby of Seattle, Tacoma, Spokane. And it's, it there's like three separate meetings with um Pat Sullivan, Representative Sullivan. Um, I think Dolan, and I think there's going to be another one next week with the Senator Billig, their Senator Rolfis today. Talking about the the enrollment bill fourteen seventy six, which the bill has been narrowed down. Uh, at this point, according to Melissa, to mostly just making sure that the.
Uh, at this point, according to Melissa, to mostly just making sure that the levy calculations aren't impacted by the enrollment declines. Um, I think that's because the, it doesn't affect us because we're, we're bait, our levy is set at the rate, not on a per. Per student basis. Um, but that's what the focus is, the legislature has taken amendments on that bill to say if you don't have kids in school. That you won't be able to take advantage of the, the updated. Formula for levies, so I think they're doing everything they can in the legislature to try to um. Bring students back. For us, the issue is more lev equalization, it's the two thousand nineteen twenty enrollment use versus this year's enrollment. Kind of for, whatever the actual is, it's more formula driven. Um, I would say that the districts up north, uh, one of the things I mentioned earlier was that we had the S R two funds made available to us. Because we had our plan approved. Uh, the federal government is close to passing the stimulus, the third stimulus bill. And that third stimulus bill infuses another large amount of money into the state to try to deal with potential shortfalls. Uh, I think that the legislature likely will use some of those funds to offset some of their plans with respect to enrollment. It impacts and then even the transportation impact, uh, which is the second bill, we'll basically be talking with them tomorrow about the enrollment and the transportation bills. What? The King County districts are trying to advocate for is that all the federal money should come. And in addition to the federal money that comes in, we should also receive any state impacted, you know, the fact that we lost enrollment because of the pandemic. We should receive state funds for that. And the transportation impacts, which I've illustrated is about 10 million for us, that the state should fund that, they shouldn't use federal money to do that. Um, I'm, I'm, don't plan on uh, trying to push that with our folks. Because the federal allocation potentially is pretty significant that comes through in S R three. And so you get to the point where you, you, you may be asking for so, so much, it becomes kind of like. It, it's ridiculous, but. Um, I think it's important for us to participate with those districts and be seen as, as one of the larger districts and, and potentially influence what's happening. But I don't want us to be viewed the same way in terms of that, so I talked to Melissa about that and the approach and our approach really is more around. Formula changes, uh, we, we need to get the, potentially the lap formula change, we need the lev equalization formula change for us. The enrollment, which all these things they're saying are going to be implemented in the final budget, not as separate bills. So it's important for them to know that we're part of this and we're engaged and these are the things that we're looking for as we see some final budget approval, so. Those are kind of the main things that we're trying to work on right now, at the same time, uh, there'll be a group of us in Southwest Washington. Looking at the S R funds to make sure that the way we claim, that they're providing opportunities for us to claim those funds. That are consistent with the impact from the pandemic, so uh, you know, you, you, if you have an enrollment decline. And you can calculate what the enrollment decline is, well, that's a revenue issue, you still have to be able to show that you've spent money in ways, so we're working with OSPI and trying to. Help streamline that as much as possible. So those are kind of the things that we're working on and I'm sure Rob's got something to add there.
I don't have a, I think, yeah, I agree there, it's uh, it's a sense of the legislature is. Looking at all that revenue and all the other problems the pandemic is um. Causing, and if you, if you want to compare a district to something, compare it to any higher education institution. We're struggling, um, I was talking to this student today about. Her EFC, who expected further contribution and the facts and the fact that she's. Lost a bunch of grants and loans, or grants and scholarships that. And they're getting possible to give her to attend, even remotely. We're doing so much better than so many other agencies, but I can see them saying, well, we'll hold the harness, we'll meet the costs. Uh, but we're not going to, you know, put a bunch of money in the bank. It's a sense that I have, and that even comes from leading Democrats, so. Um, stereotypically the people that you think of. Want to increase funds. Also thinking about it, the other meeting in the state. But it's kind of wise to hold off and wait and see, meet up for minutes. I don't know where we're going to go without the support of the rest of the community, rest of the state.
Right.
So, um. The week on the hill. Uh, you. We have a planning, Julie and I coordinated having us in attendance, we're one of the facilitators. It would be a Zoom meeting, if you want to attend, you have to find the link in the one of all the lost emails that we get all the time. Uh, and click on it, but I can also forward you the link. Just click on it, that meeting is Thursday at six thirty. PM, if you want to participate. Then any of the legislative meetings will be done. That half of them are scheduled. In our area, everybody, when I last looked at it, it was everybody except Ann Rivers. Uh, who had a schedule and, and at Cleveland. We're pretty sure that because of her leadership. Role in the Senate, they were waiting to see where to slap them in compared to all the other meetings and community, and so I think we're going to get to see. Everybody from the seventeenth. Everybody from the eighteenth in one meeting, they think that's, that's to do it that way. Uh, and then the forty-ninth, um, two, the three meetings are scheduled, one, ask if they're going to be. But it'll be, those will be midday things, so if you have to break away from work to come to a meeting, that's. But this was setting that term. Uh, and. We're basically talking about the three. Topics, right, that the legislative conference talked about. Um, one of the things, I had a student volunteer and. Looked like she was interested in my graduation requirements, there's a graduation requirements bill number. Probably don't need the number, but it's the one uh. Eleven sixty-two, uh, which passed the House and it's sitting in the Senate, would reduce the state requirement for credits to twenty out of the twenty-four. Continue to require schools to offer twenty-four credits. In addition to the pathways idea that's been developing and that the pandemic kind of sort of interrupted. Uh, that's telling everybody's name, it was Representative Stone's signature accomplishment there. Uh, to get graduations to be more flexible. Uh, they're proposing a portfolio pathway. Sort of performance, you know, not arts performance, but a performance exhibition, uh, meeting specified criteria. That I imagine the State Board of Education would go and reform. Uh, and. It's, uh, in my view, it's supporting, uh, just to allow the flexibilities and kind of. It's a plan for waivers for individual circumstances and civil recognizing individual circumstances and planning for graduations. Um, so we'll be supporting that, um. And I think three or four other bills, and also thanking the legislators for passing the ones that were on our hot topics, they've now, you know. Gone through one of the houses and are now in. The other house, most of those passages were very. It was very high real call with yes votes, who, most of them, it's nice to see. Um. You know that, it was. So. Yeah, meeting on Thursday. And then schedule the meetings, uh, revealed on Thursday, as far as you have it, and then. We just have Zoom meetings all week, we have as many. Those that you want to attend. But we'll be planning and setting those up in the breakout groups, uh, on a Thursday night. Once we're all this good thing. With that, getting, getting a solid person this quickly. Um. Can figure based on the, what the state's been doing. Around the state is uh. It's going to turn out to be really helpful. As far as legislation goes and as far as the pandemic goes.
Quick, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. And I am adjourning this meeting, thank you so much for everyone who participated, appreciate that.
Thank you.